Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting on today, Tuesday, September fourteenth, at six thirty. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for a moment of silence afterward.
Let's pray. Oh, God Almighty, thank you for the privilege of being together this evening to conduct the business of this community. Father, we continue to pray your unfettered blessings upon us as a community. Bless us with peace, bless us with leadership, bless us with people who want to make this a great community for families. Father, we pray your blessings upon those who serve and protect. Extra blessings upon them. So, Father, tonight, we seek your wisdom, your guidance, for that which is best for this community. Instill these men and women with such in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. A moment of silence, please.
Mr. President, for this evening's moment of silence, I would like to ask everybody in the room to keep in mind this past week was the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven and all the firefighters and police officers that we lost, as well as the anniversary of our own Officer Schultz, who sacrificed for his town. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Ward, would you please lead us in a pledge tonight?
Our pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, can you call the roll, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Councilman Spann?
Present.
Councilman Hardaway?
Here.
Councilman Minchuck?
Here.
Councilwoman Muzlak?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
And Councilman Pettit? And Councilman Bella?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Six present. Thank you. Tonight, under petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, our first item tonight is a donation presentation to the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. Mr. Hardaway, would you please join me up front with a check presentation? I'd like to call on Allison Volks. She's the Vice President of Development and Communications at the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana to also come forward with us. Sheila, stay there. Keep working up that number. Also tonight, we have the letter from Town Engineering Administrator endorsing the Core Construction's recommendation to approve the payment for application. Is it number twenty-three, Steve?
Uh, yeah, it'll be twenty-three. I'll make that correction.
To various vendors for work completed at the Maryville Community Center.
Yes, President Bella, and council members, the town's professional staff, and myself have reviewed the August twenty-twenty-one billing for work completed at the new Dean and Barbara White Community Center. And we do concur with Core Construction's recommendation in approving payment for application twenty-three to the vendors listed below, the total amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion to make Councilman Hardaway, second by Councilwoman Muzlak for approval of application number twenty-three. The amount's ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Also tonight, under communications, we have a large gathering permit application. This is out of sequence normally, but we're doing this for the petitioner's request. Sheila, would you talk to us about this, please?
So, this large gathering application is from the Howley Mad Detachment Marine Corp League, approval for a large gathering permit, outdoor blues music, sixty-eight eighty Hendrick Street, for September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, Saturday, two P.M. to seven P.M. The Howley Mad Detachment Marine Corps League will host its blues on the tavern located at sixty-eight eighty Hendrick Street at the above time and date that I mentioned earlier. Anticipated visitors will be two hundred at any given time. Since two hundred, maximum number of tickets will be sold. Security plans will be confirmed by the Maryville Police Department, and an application has been applied for Homeland Security amusement and entertainment permit. There will be five porta potty water facilities from service sanitation. There will be two male toilet facilities, three female toilet facilities to use. There will be one dumpster, fifteen trash containers onsite, and will be maintained by total disposal. Food truck vendors will be present on the lot during the event. There will not be a telephone service available to the public. On-site parking will be available and will be accessible from paved public street. There are one hundred parking spaces available in the lot. Parking from surrounding areas will not be used. No overnight stays will be a part of this assembly. Entertainment will be held outside on entertainment stage.
Motion to approve outdoor blues music?
Second.
Is the petitioner here? Mr. Ward? Are you representing them tonight? Come on forward, please, to the podium. I have just a quick question. Motion to make Mr. White with a second by Mrs. Muzlak. A quick question. Is the permit and this activity strictly for the league itself?
Fundraiser-wise?
Yes. So, it is a fundraiser?
Yes.
Okay. So, no one's actually making any money from this, just the group?
There's a management group that's putting on the entertainment-wise, and they're paying the bands for that out of the ticket sales and the rest of the procedure coming to Howley Mad.
Okay. So, Sheila, this application would be normally what, a hundred-dollar permit?
Yes.
So, what I'd like to do is ask Mr. White if he can add this to his motion, and Mrs. Muzlak, if your second will stand to waive the one hundred-dollar fee to support this Marine Corps event.
Yes, I would like to amend that to waive the one hundred-dollar fee in my motion.
I will second that to waive the one hundred-dollar fee.
All right. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? How much are the tickets for the fundraiser?
They're fifteen dollars, pre-purchased, and twenty.
Okay, and where do we get them?
Probably, a couple of our members are here tonight.
Oh, okay. Very good. Good for the public to know. Thank you.
And I'm going.
Yes, we will be there.
And thank you very much for waiving that fee.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Sure. Hi, Chief.
Any other discussion on the motion? Chief, you're okay with this?
Absolutely.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher for approval for September fourteenth, and we also have the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of August twenty-fourth and thirty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to make Mrs. Muzlak, second by Councilman Spann, for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees, Budget and Finance, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on in the meeting, we'll have a couple of resolutions coming up for the American Rescue Plan, so that we can start figuring out plans on how we're going to spend this money once we pass these resolutions tonight, because we still need to come up with some guidelines for specific parts of it, and we can't do that until we pass these resolutions. Also, we're going to meet with Myers and Galeros. The Budget and Finance Committee will meet with Myers and Galeros to talk about the next year's insurance, and then we'll try to get together with the entire council and bring it back and have a discussion with everybody else. From a budget standpoint, we are going to meet with a few of the departments again to go over their requests for the twenty-twenty-two budget and look at what they requested and what we can afford to give them, and because I think everything has to be inputted by Friday, so we have to, that's the urgency here for tomorrow's meeting at three P.M. with the Budget and Finance and Department Heads. So, if anybody has any questions, or if we come out tomorrow and be a part of the major discussions, so that we can make sure that we meet our timelines and we're not deficient in what we're trying to do. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any report for Council Affairs, Pat? For Mr. Pettit?
No, sir.
Mr. President? I was, yes, in the terms of the Council Affairs, I do know that we got our census numbers. Would that fall up under this report?
Sure, it could.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to find out what the census numbers are and if there's going to be a redistricting of any of the wards, so I just want to know when that may occur. Thank you.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
Nothing new, but I know we do have our Fall Newsletter coming out here very soon, so keep an eye out for that, because every time in the fall, the newsletter is to schedule for the leaf pickup program, so please keep an eye out for that newsletter. Hang on to it, it gives you specific dates and times and how the operation works, so please keep an eye out for that. That is all, sir.
Elections, public relations, and town beautifications. Again, Mr. Pettit, Pat, anything to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Muzlak.
Yes. According to national statistics, we are six percent higher than we were in January with the COVID. We have had fourteen people die this last weekend in northwestern Indiana. That includes eight from Lake County, four from Porter County, one in Newton County, and one in, oh, let's see, one in La Porte, four in La Porte County. Newton County, La Porte, Lake County, and Porter County. They were all involved with people that have passed from COVID. We have had fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty Hoosiers that have died so far from the COVID virus. One thousand and seventy were out of Lake County. So, we have eighty-five million people in the United States that have not taken the vaccination. That's according to our national statistics, which I hope that people really will get on the ball and take it if they haven't. And I have to give my sympathy to Chief Shellheart, his wife, he used to be our police chief, I think that was around the year of two thousand, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay. Pamela Shellheart, she passed away last week with COVID virus, and I also give my sympathy to the family of Don Poterbitt. He was a Lake County Councilman out of Hobart and Maryville. He passed away last week with a touch of COVID after having cancer for a couple of years, so please keep them in your prayers. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I stated earlier, I ahead of myself a little bit, the personnel and employee benefits, we will meet Friday, three P.M. There's a possibility, Marge, that we will have a few people to interview at that time, and at the same time, hopefully, we'll meet with Myers and Galeros to discuss the insurance.
When did you want to do that, Richard?
It's going to be Friday, three o'clock.
Oh, this Friday?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll be there.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Mr. President, one thing. Under public safety, I got an email yesterday from the state, and the stoplight at Fifty-third and Broadway, they've ordered the park for it, and it will be repaired by the end of September.
Okay, good. That's been a lengthy process.
It's been, we're two months, it's been two months since this thing happened. And I've been, I email them every week, so that's, they're, you know, they're on top of it, and they were, originally what they said was that it was going to be sometime in October, but because of the pressure that they're getting from somebody, and I'm assuming Senator Milton, they are going to do it by the end of September.
Okay. Thank you. Economic Development Chairman is Mr. Pettit. Pat, anything to add?
Nothing at this point.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
This is for Pat. Have we had any information on our conversation about the old nursing home there on sixty-first Avenue?
Yes, I can fill you in on that after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Muzlak.
All the parks are brought up to par in Maryville, and we're working on the one park in Chapel Manor. I believe that it is completed now, from what I'm hearing. I didn't see it personally, and anything else with the parks, I will take up with Mr. Hardaway, with our director that we are to hire. Okay? That's my report. Thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've instructed Vicki and the code enforcement people to, let's start going after the vacant and abandoned homes and to make sure that we can get those homes registered, so that we'll have, we'll have a catalog of people that have these vacant and abandoned homes, so that, because we're losing money if they don't register, because it's a hundred dollars for a home and two hundred dollars for a business. So, I've instructed Vicki and code enforcement to let's go after these people diligently to see if they don't want, if they don't want nobody living, then let's pay us a hundred bucks a year, and we'll protect them for you. That's it.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Just wanted to bring to the council's attention the improvements from blighted properties in Ward Seven. Fifty-seventh and Adam Street has been brought up to code. On Fifty-eighth and right off of Tab Street, the house been sold. It was burnt out for seven years. It's done. On Sixtieth Place, right off of Cleveland Street, that house has been rehabbed and is for sale, so we're definitely working on to make sure that all those houses that may be vacant or have been vacant for an extended amount of time is enough to be par. Thank you.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, we met a couple weeks ago, kind of going over some last-minute, or last-minute, but last projects towards the end of our center, so we're trying to finish up some last projects, got to get things finished up. We got a few things at Weiss Field that we're polishing up, and then the big project would be the trail and bridge, which will hopefully be started on after the winter time, and we already had that money set aside, so we will be ready to go, sir. That is all I have at this time.
Thank you. Special Projects, Food and Beverage Tax, Diversity, Town's Birthday, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are in the final phase of our fifty birthday celebration. We will start meeting the first week in October to make final plans for our final event, anybody that wants to be a part of it. We've got some great ideas coming out of this one. We want this, the first two were great, in fact, they were better than great, and at this last one, we want this to be a stellar performance and encourage everybody to come out. Hopefully, the weather's going to cooperate with us at that time, and we're just going to have a great time with all of the businesses that were here for fifty years or so, and just a chance to showcase not only the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, but also all of the businesses that are in town. So, we're, first weekend, first week in October, on the Thursday, we will start our meetings, and we will continue through December the eleventh.
Mr. Hardaway, also under your committee, you take care of the diversity issues in town and our training and things we've been doing, and I believe tonight that Councilman White has a statement about diversity and inclusion. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to say in hindsight, but what I would want to say is that when I look at the diversity and inclusion, it doesn't necessarily always mean people. It means families, neighborhoods, things of those natures, and that's why I want to say that I did reconsider my vote, and I will vote for it, but I just wanted to add as well that when we look at diversity, let's look at the whole town, because I have people that come to me and says they feel like they're not part of the town. So, when I look at inclusion and diversity, it's not in here, it's the entire community, and that's a conversation I've been having with residents lately, so I didn't get any, should I say, pressure to change this, I just thought it was the right thing to do, and, you know, just to keep the unity going, I thought it was the right thing to do. Nobody told me, "Councilman, I'm mad at you for making your statement," but after, just in my own thought process, I thought that was the right thing to do, so, and I will add some additional things next time. Thank you.
I will have to add to that, please, Mr. President.
Sure.
Pastor Walton, would you please stand? He is the pastor in my fourth ward for the last twenty years, I believe. Is that correct? Twenty-three years. He has helped us, he's worked with the youth in the community, built a gym, and we have a very good diversity program going on in the fourth ward. Thanks to Pastor Walton, and thank you again.
That's great.
Thank you.
While we were circulating the actual statement for signatures tonight, Pat, do you have that in front of you? Would you mind reading that statement? I think it's appropriate to read that again into the record.
Be my pleasure. "The Town Government of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, September one, two thousand twenty-one, Statement of Diversity and Equity. The Town of Maryville elected leaders as well as town department leadership believe in creating a space where all employees and visitors feel included, respected, and equal no matter their race, gender, ethnicity, age, sexual orientation, physical, mental disability, or any other trait or characteristic. We will strive to promote diversity and inclusion throughout our town government, uplifting our community through education and outreach opportunities. Together, we pledge to acknowledge the universal, pardon me, universal truth that all persons are created to be unique and equal, and we promise to honor that each and every day."
Thank you, Pat. So, Pat, that's in front of you, and I assume you're going to sign that, too, and then we're going to pass that around to the Department Heads. You can do it tomorrow at the Department Head meeting, and let's make sure we include Judge Velasco and Clerk Treasurer Kelly White-Gibson.
Surely will.
Thank you. Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Councilman White.
Yes, Mr. President. I did get an email from the Director of the Lake County Solid Waste District. Of course, at the last meeting, they didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet, so we're anticipating that we're going to have a meeting on the fifteenth, I believe, of this month, but it would be via Zoom, it still won't be in person, even though they're very anxious to come to the community center. So, at this time, we happen to meet probably, but it'll be zoomed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, also known as NERC-C, Councilman Hardaway.
Our next meeting is Thursday at nine P.M.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources Director Matt Lake.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that currently, there's a lot of earthwork going on at the Broadfield Pond for the Broadfield subdivision. Just to go back in time a little bit, no eight, that particular area flooded out significantly, and as a result of that, Christopher Burke did a study showing what needed to be done in that area, and as a result of that study, as development comes in, we do a very intense review and hold the development to a standard of the level of that particular study that was done. In twenty eighteen, we had an additional fifteen million gallons added storage as a result of a development that was done in there, and now currently, we've got another development going in, that'll be another three-point-five million gallons of stormwater storage that will be excavated out to carve out for that pond, and then in total, we're looking at eighteen-point-five million gallons of stormwater storage as a result of the reviews and things that we look at in order to protect the area, so significant level of flood protection now for that area, and so we look forward to continue looking at developments and trying to solve problems through new development, which is always a good thing. I'm also looking forward to working with you guys with the American Rescue Plan funds. Once we figure out what kind of money's allocated, we'll look at each ward, sit down with you, and go through projects that are feasible, and hopefully, this allows us for a little more flexibility to reach areas that we couldn't reach before. We also replied for Tree City USA status, so I don't think we'll have a problem, we've been to Tree City for over ten years now, so we'll continue that word and proudly show those signs at the entryways of our town, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Moving on, the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, our representative is our Town Manager, Pat Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting is Thursday of this week, the sixteenth, and we'll report back to the council. The council has in your packet or at your desk some recent samplings of marketing materials from the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority. Also, I learned today that the town's grant application, jumpstart grant application, has been approved, and the Finance Committee will recommend to the full board at Thursday's meeting to approve the twenty-thousand-dollar grant.
Excellent.
That'll be money that we'll be able to use for our final event, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Good news, Pat. Let's work on that.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Department, Department Head reports. Vicki?
Not before to respond.
Steve?
No, not till later.
Chief Cortino? Don't be shy.
Yes, can I be brief? Wanted to be, Mr. King. Yes, the Maryville Police Department has Chaplain Department with our Department, Chaplain Randy Scott. We used to have two with Father Vamos until he retired, and I got a chance to meet Pastor Walton, and we had dialogue. He showed interest of what the Maryville Police Department does, other than just being out in the road. I got a chance to introduce him to quite a few of the officers, also invited him to our Police Commission meeting last week, and I asked him, and appreciate that he accepted, but he's willing to be our second Chaplain for the Maryville
for the Maryville Police Department.
Great.
That's good. Congratulations. That's all right.
Chief, how's things going at the North Police Station?
It's going just fine.
I had a question for Chief.
Yes, Chief.
The articles that I read in the newspaper, Chief, I was really proud of what your goals are. And I know we got a lot to do because these speeders still seem not to be getting the message in certain areas. I just think that maybe it could come back to more towards Steve. That light on 57th and, and Broadway, need a turn signal right there because I go through there. And I'm telling you, if you, if you're not constant enough what you're doing, you're going to get slammed. So I didn't know if you had an update, Steve. I'm sorry, Chief, I meant that to go to Steve. If you, if you have an update on that, I want to know when they want to. Or do we not need senators involved in this to get that done? Because it's, it's a life and death issue.
We bring up a good point, Councilman White. When, and this might be, you know, I've reached out to INDOT several times on this, emails back and forth. We're probably going to have to follow Mr. Hardaway's lead and get in hold of the Senator. I know the INDOT was going to have some traffic studies done. That was the last update that they had given me. But I think probably getting the Senator involved would be probably our better way at this point.
Who have you been in contact with from the state? Because I can give you a couple more emails.
Yeah.
I can give you a couple email addresses that I, that I went through.
Sure, sure.
And then I'll, then I'll also give you Ashley Lopez, which is the Senator's Administrative Assistant.
Perfect.
I'll give you all of those. And between those, between the three that I give you?
Yeah.
You should be able to get something. And when I go to NERC-C on Thursday?
Yes.
I will mention it to the Representative from INDOT.
Okay. So when I call, when I call INDOT or email INDOT, I email a gentleman's name, it's Alan Holder Reed. He's a district traffic engineer.
These people are way, these people are way up there.
Well, that's perfect. And I deal with Mr. Adam Parkhouse. He's the District Communications Director for Leport. If they're above him, that's great because that will help.
These are, these people are down in Indy, so.
Any, any, any link up you can give us, Mr. Hardaway? That'd be fantastic.
I'll give you the information.
Okay, perfect.
If I jump in for one second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Benchuk.
Thank you. As long as we're talking to higher-ups from INDOT and, and we have their ear, all up and down US 30 for 65, all the way to the Sherwood border, they, they maintain and keep all the property nice and neat except for one section. And that's the section in front of Planet Fitness there, that ditch.
Oh, okay.
It looks horrible in the summertime, and it's always overgrown. If they could just please put that on their list of things to maintain that they do everything else on 30, that would be great.
Yeah, they have really, they have really gotten lax. We had issues with, with them on Broadway this year with the weeds growing up and stuff. They actually finally got out there and did that. There's some curbing issues that they're going to be addressing here. Curb that's not there anymore that needs to be replaced. We're working on that with them.
I know this particular spot, I mean, it was even left alone prior to the new, to new, the new development there for Planet Fitness is.
Yeah.
And I know if I'm not mistaken, and I could be wrong on this, I think just next door, where the steakhouse is, he, he does that himself, just to keep his business looking nice, so.
Well, we'll put that on the list for the, for the people that Mr. Hardaway is going to give us, because I've got, you know, other issues that I've talked to them about, the, the signs up and down Broadway that have just faded, you can't see anymore. I mean, just, they have just been really lax. I mean, we've had, it got so bad, I had our crews out there kind of help, just, I said, "We can't, you know, put up with this." The town looking like this. So we weed whacked a couple times out there ourselves, picked up garbage that nobody else picks up. And, you know, so when Mr. Hardaway gives the information, we'll, we'll start getting on that in the morning. The 53rd Avenue and Broadway, as Mr. Hardaway talked about, was on the phone with Adam Parkhouse this afternoon. They were going to add that to a change order to another job. That became a whole debacle. And from what I was told today, your Indy source is probably better than this, but Adam Parkhouse told me that it, it should be any day that's going to be fixed. I'm going to take that with a grain of salt for right now. So, but we'll move, we'll move forward with these things and we'll go up over the district levels head. That's not a problem at all. So real quick, just want to touch bases on the paving program. The concrete work has been done in Ward 5. They're going to start grinding the roads out there, starting tomorrow, and start paving. We've got a drop back. There's some sidewalk issues in Ward 4 we're going to be taking care of. Some little straggler things here and there. Overall, we're 70% done with the work. We've still got work at Town Hall, some work at the Veterans Memorial we're going to do down the street, and then a couple other areas we're going to deal with. 57th Avenue did start this past week. They ran into some locate issues. Those will be corrected. There'll be start work back there on Thursday. So that's the update on that. The material, so the gateway sign at 61st Avenue, Hubinger's waiting on material to come in. Soon as that comes in, they'll, they'll get that put in. I talked to Eric Hubinger this afternoon. And he said, "I'm just, I'm just, I'm waiting for it to get here, and I'll get it taken care of." So that's, that's going to be done. And I think that was all I had for right now.
Mr. President, this is for Steve. I'd like to thank you for coming out last week, meeting with neighbors that were complaining about certain issues, specifically speeding.
Sure.
Also, I'd like to thank the Chief for sending off Commander, is he a Commander? Rice. Actually, while he was there, people were speeding. He, he pulled people right there at the, right in your face. And additionally, some of the complaints were about school buses that were coming through there at a higher rate of speed, which I did talk to a school board member and let them know that, you know, we had got some complaints. So I just, again, Steve, thanks for coming out with me.
No, no problem.
You know, we also went to see Ms., Ms. Q.
Yes, we did.
And talked about some of her issues that we're still trying to address. So these guys are on the ground, foots on the ground or boots on the ground individuals. Just wanted to let you know, I appreciate it.
No, no problem.
And the community appreciated.
No problem.
Yes, I wanted to thank Steve for coming out and talking to Mr. Morgan, the one with the gravel and the grass. Did you take care of that? I think you did.
Yep.
And several people from aggressive lake called me on the good job that you did with the paving, the curbs, et cetera.
Okay.
And one question I have for you. I had mentioned it to Kevin recently. I have not heard from him. People on Hendrick's Place, 78, they are requesting a street sign right off of Route 30. Can you place it by the park? There's a park there, too.
So you're talking, so 73rd and Hendrick's Place, Morgan?
No, 78 that would be.
Okay.
Going down towards Whitcomb and Route 30.
Okay.
They do not have a street sign there, and I think it would be Hendrick's Place. I live on Hendrick Street, 75.
Right.
They are on the 7800 block, I believe, or 8000, too. And they've never had a street sign there.
Okay.
So maybe you could look into that.
Yep, I gotta, I have a note right here. We'll, we'll verify what it is, and we can make it right there in the sign shop, and we'll, we'll get that taken care of.
Well, I don't know if INDOT will let you put it right up on Route 30.
It's, it'll just be a normal street name sign, so it'll be, you know, we'll put it in our right of way, not INDOT's right of way.
I mean, somewhere where they could see it coming up from Route 30.
Yep.
Because a lot of people miss that turn, okay?
Yep, we will get it taken care of, sure.
Very good. Thank you, Steve.
No problem. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Dicky? Sheila?
No, just a little later.
Okay. So I want to ask everybody, do you ever feel that, that, that the police department should use your personal car as an unmarked car? Because when I drive my car around town, all I see is speeders, people texting, zooming through red lights. And I often think, wow, if this was a police car, unmarked, I could write 20 tickets just today. And it seems like it's getting worse and worse out there. So I applaud the Chief for having a new traffic division, but we need to get really busy, okay? All over town, you know, Chief?
Yes.
So it's a tough situation.
I would like to really increase that, you know, that division, because I'm getting it from all over, and unfortunately, we can't be on, at all times. And believe me, they do make contact with the violators. And they bring on when they show me exactly what they have done when they're out there.
Mr. President, I was going to ask you and the rest of the council, if the Chief needed additional resources to make that work a lot better for him, is that something that we can entertain?
We'll talk about it tomorrow at 3 o'clock.
Okay.
Budget meeting.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving on tonight to general orders. We have ordinance on second reading. We have no first reading ordinances. But for second reading, we have ordinance 21-23, the ordinance of the Town of Maryville, amending ordinances, et cetera, a long list there. And pay for employees of the Town of Maryville for the calendar year 2021. This is a second reading on ordinance we approved at the last meeting. It changed the, some parks departments' salaries, as well as the new admin person in Stormwater Management. Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardaway for approval on second reading of ordinance 21-23. Anything to add, Madam Clerk Treasurer?
No.
Trista, anything to add?
No.
Okay. Easy enough. Discussion? Roll call. I'm sorry. Second reading ordinance, open to the public. Is there any public comment tonight on this ordinance? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take roll now.
Mrs. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Benchuk?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All in favor?
Six in favor. The motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions. We have Resolution 21-61. This is a change in the holiday days and pay for the calendar year 2022. And what we've done is added the new holiday of Juneteenth on June 20th. And the town offices will be closed on that Monday, and employees will get paid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. White for approval of Resolution 21-61, adding Juneteenth to our list. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Is it also a federal holiday now?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 21-62. It's a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, to approve Phase 2 of the Maryville Recovery Plan. Madam Clerk Treasurer or Trista, comments on this one?
I want Trista to take it. She's here.
I think we should probably read this in the record. Is that right, Trista? Kelly's been awful quiet tonight, so we want to hear from her.
Certainly your call, not required, but not required. At your whim.
It's short. Go ahead, Kelly.
I just like hearing me talk.
Resolution 21-62, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, to approve Phase 2 of the Maryville Fiscal Recovery Plan, whereas the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana qualifies as a non-entitlement unit under the American Rescue Plan. And whereas the Town Council has previously established the Maryville Fiscal Recovery Committee, the Committee, and whereas the Committee has met to establish the required Maryville Fiscal Recovery Plan, the plan, in order to use the American Rescue dollars. And whereas the plan may be amended in the future, the current plan, Phase 2, as attached as Exhibit B, has been presented to the Town Council for review. And whereas, under the rules of the American Fiscal Rescue Plan, the Town Council is to approve the plan prior to any funds being spent. And whereas the Council is desirous to start using the American Fiscal Rescue Plan funds to the benefit of the citizens and businesses in the Town of Maryville. And whereas, from time to time, the Council will add to the plan as further needs and uses of the American Rescue dollars are identified. And therefore, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, that, one, the Maryville Fiscal Recovery Plan, Phase 2, attached as Exhibit B is hereby approved. And, two, implementation of the various programs and fund allocations shall proceed as swiftly as is reasonable.
Thank you, Kelly.
Motion to approve.
Agreed.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway with a second by Councilman Span for approval of Resolution 21-62. Any questions or comments on the motion? Anything to add, Trista?
What you'll see then in Exhibit B, the attachment for Phase 2, will include here going forward, each subsequent exhibit, little asterisks for what is added, so that your attention can be drawn to it quickly. But that way, the plan in total will stay intact. So what's being added here under the Section A are the job fair promotion expenses, which qualify. Many of those have been paid already pursuant to the billings, but money can be reclassified and reassigned to those, so that frees up general fund dollars for other things. As well, the aid to nonprofit organizations is listed as really a general category, so that going forward, you'll have a little bit more freedom in giving donations, such as the Food Bank donation that was made tonight, without having to come back to an entire new resolution every single time. The last item there is administrative expenses. As they come up, maybe expenses for contractual services can also be paid with the American Rescue Plan dollars. Again, because it is specifically for that determination, your general fund will not be used for those expenses.
Great. Thank you, Trista. Any other discussion on the motion? Here, now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 21-63. It's a companion resolution identifying certain areas in Fund 176 where these monies could be spent. Again, these are estimates. This simply starts the process for us to get quotes in these various department categories and start spending these funds down.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Hardaway for approval of Resolution 21-63. I think for the record, it would be appropriate to read at least these amounts appropriated into the record. Want to do that?
I just passed it.
You just passed it?
But I'll bring it back. I get it.
Kelly, this is because you were late tonight, so you're getting punished.
You actually started one minute early. Turned 6:30 when I was in here. Anyway, the American Rescue Plan Fund 176, so there are several categories in which you can spend this money. And what we've decided is Department number one is Public Health, $650,000. Department number two, negative economic impacts, $400,000. Department, Department five, infrastructure, $3 million. Department six, revenue replacement, $1 million. And Department seven, administrative, $100,000.
And the total?
A total of $5,150,000.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, additional discussion? Anything to add, Trista?
Briefly this evening, the Committee, of course, will continue to discuss going forward on specific expenditures. But having these lump sums readily available then will allow those expenses to go through your regular APV process, again, without having to come back for specific approval every single time. You will note that the total, the 5.15 million, is not the entire, entire amount of the money that the town will receive in total, which you expect to be 7.8. You received the first half already, 3.9-ish. And so some of the expenses here that are included in this umbrella appropriation are four-year-long allotments or expected expenditures, such as the security here at the front of the building. We expect, as long as COVID takes, that you will have someone there to monitor. And so that entire four-year projected expense is included. Other one-time expenditures, things that the department heads presented to the committee as ideas, those may be a one-time expense, are included here as well. And so, it's meant to be broad to begin with, and, again, starts the process.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk Treasure, let's do a roll call on this important resolution, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spann?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor?
Six in favor. Motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to Board of Zoning Appeals, Actions, and Large Gathering Permits.
Mr. President, we have one Board of Zoning Appeals. Would you please approach the podium, Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Sure. Case number Z29UV6-08. Applicant Crossworld Plaza LLC, petitioner Crossworld Plaza LLC, and owner Crossworld Plaza LLC. Variance of Use Approval in an M2 Industrial Zoning District. Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval from Section 21-137 to allow a home goods store consignment sales service selling both new and used resale merchandise in an M2 industrial zoning district. The proposed building located at 6112 Broadway is 52,320 square feet and has two exits. The store will be selling art, antiques, collectibles, memorabilia, home goods, custom furniture, and general household items. These are quality brand-name items that are imported in at reduced prices. There will also be items acquired through estate sales and available in the store. The store hours will be 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the attorney has a copy of the lease. The conditions placed on there is for this petitioner only, of this location only, and for this use only, and the petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance.
Richard Anderson, 9211 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. Mr. David Israel is also here tonight, who's the managing member of Crossroads Plaza LLC. Basically, I think Sheila covered most of the details of it. And it's 50,000 square feet, and it would be in the same building that the ruler foods is in, which is the building on the far west side.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
A question for you, sir. Do this home goods sales service, are they already established somewhere? Where would they be?
They're supposedly opening stores in Chicago, according to their website.
Okay. Is that the, I'm saying, are they already open, or?
I can't answer that. They've been trying to open here for over a year, but because of COVID, that kind of slowed it down.
Okay. I think it's a good idea, because it's actually, in my world, you know how I feel about the Crossroad Plaza being vibrant.
Yes.
And, and we want to continue to please our constituents as well, both business constituents and residential constituents. They want that area to be looking better. So hopefully, this will be, hopefully, this will be a good situation. I'm going to keep an eye on this thing closely to make sure that people are satisfied with it and hope there's anything that we could do here to make it work a lot better for you. I think that's something I know I can support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Anderson, as you know, I was at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting the night that this was approved.
Yes.
I think there was some confusion about the M1 classification, that this was, M1 was going to run out in a period of two or three years. Is that correct?
M2.
M2, I'm sorry.
And that basically expires on 10/9 of 2022.
Okay.
And so.
This lease, though, with the home goods sales and services, this runs longer than that, right?
This is five and a half years for the first one of the five-year option.
Okay, so some of the, I, I believe some of the members thought that this business would have to close when the M2 designation is expired. That is not the case?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure the council's aware of that. This is going to be a five-and-a-half-year lease?
And basically, we're still hoping that with the other building, which is the building further to the east, the long building, which I call the Tiddles Building, from way back when, would be, that would be still, we're still working for the M2.
Okay.
That's why we're not trying to change any.
Richard, you guys went for a variance or a special exception, right?
Pardon me?
You guys went for a variance or a special exception through the VZA, correct?
Went for a variance of use for this.
Variance of use because of the M2 designation?
Yes.
Yes. So, 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 so that trumps?
Trumps the zoning.
Trumps the zoning.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, because that night, it seemed a little, at least to me.
Yeah, we're going to need a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the proposed home food sales service in Maryville, or the economy of Maryville. Very good, Richard Anderson.
And for the economy of that area, because that area really needs something going on. And I second the motion.
Yeah, the motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. White, for approval of the case number Z29UV-0821. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. President, we have one large gathering application left. With the petitioners, please come forward. The application is for Haunted Hills Hospital Haunted Attraction, approval for a large gathering, Haunted House Attraction, 7611 East Lincoln Highway, for its, the period of 17 days, October 1st through November 6th. Friday, 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 noon. Saturday, 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Sunday. 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and a special trick-or-treat days for children, October 23rd and October 30th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Haunted Hills Attraction Haunted House will be held for 17 days. The property is located at 7611 Lincoln Highway, was approved to be the location of a Haunted House Attraction on May 26, 2021, and the town council approved on June 8, 2021, with the conditions of meeting the security recommendations and with the six-month review. The proposed site did not meet the required Indiana fire and building code. The event must now be held outside this year. The maximum number of people will be 1,500 for each day. There will be no drinking fountains. There will be six porta-potties, six trash cans, and one dumpster. The waste hauler is Republic Services, and there will be 150 onsite parking spaces. There will be vendors, games, and a scare zone area. Both fire inspector and chief of police has visited the site. There will be four Maryville Police Officers, two at the main entrance, and two at the exits. Officers will be onsite from the start to one hour after closing. Haunted Hills has a security team that monitors the parking area. Lights have been installed per town council recommendations. The lighted areas include the entrance and exits. There is no, there is handicap parking available onsite. A temporary fence has been erected for the safety of the walking area. The fire inspector and the state inspector will inspect the attraction before the opening to make sure fire extinguishers are in the maze. All comments from the fire department's checklist has been addressed and that there is access for the fire equipment in case of any emergency. So, Mr. President, what happened here is, once the Haunted House Attraction people started to prepare for opening their attraction, it was found that they need to put a sprinkler system in and various other things that they could not do in order to be prepared for the Haunted Attraction this season. So they're coming to the town to request a large gathering permit just for this year.
Okay. Ms. Shine, did we get the traffic flow worked out? I know that was an issue last time we spoke to these petitioners.
So, the chief went out there and walked the grounds with them, and they've worked out how that they are going to go. Maybe the chief could elaborate on, you know, where they're going to leave and how they're going to go.
Use the microphone, though, Chief. Please, thank you.
Yes, myself and my operations commander went onsite, and we met with a gentleman here and his wife. We walked from one end to the other from Route 32, 83rd Avenue. He showed us the different areas where they're going to have handicap parking. They're going to exit out on 83rd. They did install a new traffic, Nipco light out there to light up that area. And they worked it out where, when people enter off of Route 30 into the facility to go due south, it is a shoulder lane that they will not obstruct eastbound traffic on Route 30. So we gave a thumbs up on that. He also showed us the numerous parking spots he had on property and how he's going to have it roped off where parties that's going to be walking will not be in a way of vehicles that's driving looking for parking. So he addressed that area as well.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, what is your pleasure, please?
I'm making motion to approve it.
Chair, I recognize Mrs. Yuzlak. Mr. Hardaway, would I could do a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Hardaway for approval. This petitioner, Haunted Hills. Haunted Attraction. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to old business. Is there any old business before us? Hearing none. New business. We have the approval of the Dog Park Agreement for Planning and Design Services with Lehman &amp; Lehman. I'm going to call on Councilman Minchuck to elaborate on this.
Yes. I'm going to kind of repeat myself a little bit from last week, but we had this idea a while back about building a dog park here in town. I know a few months back, we had the problem with the dogs in the area. We hired a new part-time dog catcher, and then we still wanted to go from there and build. We were going to combine these two projects into one whole thing. After we sat down a few times with my committee, we decided to separate them into two different projects. We figured it'd be best for both projects. My committees worked very hard, and I'd like to thank them all. I had Councilman Hardaway, Vicki, Steve, Matt, and also not here was Kosa. And believe it or not, my wife chipped in to help out with this one, which is rare for her. So we all chipped in. We went and looked at different dog parks around the area from different cities, got some ideas of things we want to do. We do have the property off 73rd and Broadway, right at the end of the bike trail. We think it would be a great location for it, help showcase Broadway a little bit. Also, it would help people from, like, in Turkey Creek Division, they can just park their cars, Steffick Park, walk their dog down the bike trail, and bam, they're right there at the dog park. So it kind of works out for everybody. After sitting down and going over everything and talking about the different things we wanted, we reached out to Lehman &amp; Lehman. They have designed dog parks before, so they've got a little bit of tools under their belt when it comes to this field. So we would be interested in using them. The proposal, of course, would go to the town president, but I wanted to also address the rest of the council. It's been in your packets and emailed to everybody else. So this is our step forward. Once they get the design work done, then we can probably use the winter time to kind of promote it a little bit, see anybody who's interested from our community that would like to help out or anything from there. That would be great.
Okay. So do you want to approve this? We need a motion then for, to approve this agreement?
Yes, sir.
In the amount not to exceed $9,500?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to approve the Lehman &amp; Lehman proposal not to exceed $9,500 for designing the new dog park at the location Mr. Minchuck just mentioned. I have, open for discussion. I have a question, Jeff. Did the committee identify where this is going to come from, the funding?
Yes, where he's probably to.
Okay. Does your motion still stand?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Did we at one time not speak of a union park somewhere around there, too?
Yeah, that was just prior to me. The idea was there for Union Park. I don't know how far that went. I couldn't answer you, Marj. I don't know.
I don't know. I wasn't involved.
Yeah, neither was I, so.
I'm just very curious on whatever happened to that idea.
I have no clue. I did reach out to some local union officials to ask about that. It said never reached to them. I guess it was just an idea that originated here and possibly died here.
Right. Well, it's food for thought.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Minchuck.
Thank you.
I got one thing on the new business, Mr. President.
Councilman Hardaway?
I would like to offer our condolences from the town, Mr. Reardon. Mr. Reardon lost his mother-in-law, Martha Ignarsky. I think it was August the 30th, and a few days later, his wife lost her aunt. One was 95, and the other one was 103 years old. And they, they both lived in my, right across the street from me, basically. So I'd like to offer my condolences on behalf of the town and your loss, and just know that we continue to pray for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Richard.
And I have a question for the police chief before we close.
Yes.
I've been getting a lot of calls, chief, on people working in their garages on cars, if they're making a lot of money or what. I don't know. Within the last two weeks, I believe I had 18 calls, to be exact. So do you have someone watching or driving around looking at that? Or is that too hard to find?
Is that 18 calls at one time?
No, during the two-week period. Not at one time. Over a two, three-week period. In the fourth war.
Vicki, Vicki would probably.
I think, I think that would be more of an enforcement issue, where it'd be a home-based business.
Well, I think Vicki and I have talked about it, and she said it would be hard. She's checked out a few, but you have to catch them in the action. Vicki, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, did we not speak of it?
Yes, we did.
And I know you've had several calls about the one on Hendrick Street, where there's maybe seven or eight cars parked on the street all the time.
Right.
They have been accused of working on cars, too. Did you find out anything?
They aren't working on anything that doesn't belong to them. You know, they're not running a business, per se.
But you've had the calls, too, right?
I've had calls about that house, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have public comment tonight, open to the public. Please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. And please limit your comments to two minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Robert Freeman, and the address, 1271 West 76th Avenue. We have a problem with a peeping tom. You got a guy going around stealing money out of your cars. I, I think this guy's sleeping in my yard. He was, the police was at my neighbor's house here Thursday. My neighbor called me last night, told me that he was, when he was going to work at 5:30 in the morning, the dude was on the side of my driveway. Right, right in my yard by my garage. But this guy is in that area all the time, but he's in my yard because he's quick access to the woods right there where they're building a new neighborhood on 76th and Pierce. But this guy, I'm looking through my neighbors, my phone, for neighbors. And on 9919, here go the same guy with the white hoodie on, coming across my front yard. This guy need to be stopped. And it's not only here for him, it's, it's more than one, because you can hear them by them all over on 80th, Madison Meadows. And they're often in your yard day and night. This is whoever this guy is off in our neighborhood. He's working like 2:00 o'clock in the morning to 5:00. Going around to people's cars and stuff, and houses, and doing, messing with your air conditioner, whatever he's trying to do to steal, whatever. My Mustang got fingerprints all over. Everywhere you look. I got cameras there, and this guy is avoiding the cameras.
Chief, did you get that address?
That's what I'm, like, Mr. Freeman, can I get your address again?
1271 West 76th Avenue. 76th and Pierce.
Gotcha.
All through that neighborhood, Savannah Ridge, Madison Meadows. As you see it on Neighbors. They, they're often in people's yard during the daytime. It's more than one. But this one right here with the white hoodie, I think he sleeps in my yard.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Robert.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. As you know.
Who are you, sir?
I'm sorry?
Who are you?
Thank you. My name is Gene Velasco. I'm the judge of the Maryville Town Court. And I have a few comments. I agree with President Bella with regard to the traffic, and I want to commend the chief in that his staff has been diligently recently processing traffic violations by way of ordinance violations. So there, it looks like we're, you know, just recently, there were about 500 new filings. So that was good. Two, I want you to know that I- Two, I want you to know that I signed the declaration.
Statement of diversity and inclusion?
Exactly. No one had asked me before it was drafted, but I had like one little problem, and that was one of the words in, I think, in the second or third paragraph. This says that we will strive, and like I tell my staff, is that no, we're not striving to do anything. We're going to do it, and if we're not doing, I will call them out, and as I will call anybody here who doesn't basically measure up to the intent of that document. Three, I want to commend Marge and the, the Parks and Recreation people. I've been to the new park, well, not the new park, but the.
Remodeled, yeah.
Yeah, the remodeled park across the street where I lived in Chapel Manor, Curtis Park, I think it is.
Yes.
There's, is getting quite a bit of use. I've been there several times. And yes, it's almost finished. I think that they're waiting for the grass to grow and things. But one of, one of the comments that people were making to me was that there used to be a shelter in there in a triangle, and they don't have a shelter. And there used to be, I think, benches, and, you know, it's kind of too late in the year to even think about that. But apparently, you know, I was probably one of the oldest persons there, but the other people were young women with their children and stuff, and they too wanted a place to sit down, and they have, we have them. So we hope that we can consider that for maybe next year to try to see if we can fund a small shelter and, and the benches, at least two benches for that. And I think that's all I have for today. Oh, one other thing.
I have to add, too, Judge.
Yes?
Curtis Park, that was named after Bill Curtis, who used to be a councilman, and he lived right there.
He lived in Chapel.
Chapel Manor by you.
Exactly.
Many years?
Absolutely.
Remember him, right?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I've had, I think, two councilmen live in Chapel Manor, and, except for Sean, who lives somewhere God knows where. But in any event, yeah, and I appreciate that, appreciate that. Now, I was saddened to hear that we didn't have the picnic recognition for all the staff. I, however, since I had gotten all my people excited about it, we went ahead and had our own recognition, and I invited all of you and all the, all the principal officers and some of their assistants and stuff. And some of them did come back. I had maybe somewhere around 20 people show up, so that was good. So I thought you might want to know that. All right?
Thank you, Judge.
That's it.
Judge?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and this is kind of like a dual question format as well. I know in the past that when they use benches, they had the recycled type benches that was made out of plastic caps. Do they still do that, Matt?
They, they just continued that program. We collect caps, kind of do bring so many, both to recycle, and then give you a bench made out of recycled plastic.
I do remember that.
I'm sure those other companies have recycled products. They would then, director would give them that and then coordinate and then upgrade some of these parts with some recycled.
Maybe even a grant or something, Matt?
Yeah.
Right.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I talked to Soloway's District Board about maybe donating some, some recycled benches made out of recycled content.
Or give us a grant to buy them.
Yeah, a grant is to purchase some of your.
Like, what, a couple hundred thousand, maybe?
I know we're, I know we're the government, but no.
Leonard, what are you trying to do to us? It's on the front page.
I love the front page.
He's trying to outdo Pat's donation he got for us.
Yeah.
For 20,000. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Steve?
I know up at the, the Norton Farm, there's, I wanna say five. I don't know what park they went in, but they've been sitting in there all year long. I have no idea where they go, but that's the thought, too. I think there's five of them. And they're like the, they're blue, they're like plastic, or they're, they're ninth, 10th.
Kevin might know.
I just, I just don't know where they go. And I talked to Kevin tomorrow.
Yeah, talk to Kevin. He would know.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Saying now, moving on to announcements, the next Redevelopment Commission meeting will be September 28th at 6:00 p.m. The next town council meeting is September 28th at 6:30 p.m. And the town will have its annual auction on October 16th at 10:00 a.m. here at Town Hall. And this will be a variety of items that the town is selling due to remodeling or items that the police department confiscated, confiscated, and we have no longer a need for that, and nobody has claimed them. There's some bicycles and desks and things like that, so feel free to come out and bid on those items. Before we adjourn, I do have a couple announcements for council members. The Urban League of Northwest Indiana has invited us to attend their Diversity and Inclusion Award Luncheon. It's on October 13th at Avalon Manor at 11:30. It'll run till about 1:30. If you have an interest in attending, please RSVP to Linda, and then Pat will be responsible for getting us tickets to attend that event. I understand that Maryville will be mentioned during the luncheon. I don't know for sure exactly for what, but I guess we'll go and find out.
Yes.
The other item to share is the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. That's gonna be their Ethics Summit on Friday, October 29th. It's a short, a morning session. 8:00 in the morning starts until 11:00. Again, if you have an interest in attending that, and this also goes for other elected leaders, feel free to let Linda know, and we'll get the proper tickets for your attendance.
Thank you.
I do have to call.
Plan Commission meeting, too, which will be next Tuesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yes, next Tuesday. Thank you, Marge.
Next Tuesday is the Plan Commission meeting at 6:30.
Marge, would you like to introduce your daughter who's here tonight? I need her help in closing the meeting down.
Oh.
Is that your daughter there?
No, my granddaughter.
Oh, granddaughter. Would you have her come up?
Julie Anna.
Could she come up and help us close the?
Come over here, Julie.
Julie, over here. No, over here.
Oh, in front, honey.
Oh, in front, honey. Ask her out, and you remember her from your daycare.
When we vote, I need you to hit this hammer on this thing right here real hard, okay? But not till we vote, all right?
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Hit it. Hit it, Julie.
Oh, thank you.
You didn't have to hit it that hard.